Delighted to welcome our guest today, Patrick Flynn, who's Director of City Development at Glasgow City Council. My colleague Karen Hamilton, one of the other partners in our planning team, will be doing a bit of an interview in due course. I'm Neil Culler, I head up the planning team and I'll be putting your questions as they come in or towards the end, depending how it works, to Patrick. So in handing over to Patrick, I suppose to declare just a little bit of a personal interest. I grew up on the outskirts of Glasgow during the Glasgow's Miles Better era. And I'm sure Glaswegians would still feel that Glasgow's miles better, but we've moved on to new slogans. But away from the slogan-ing, really interested just to find out from Patrick what's on his agenda and what's on Glasgow's agenda in terms of that overall development piece. So Patrick, if you maybe want to give us the opener, as it were, your initial thoughts and then we can pass over to Karen to have a bit of a chat with you.
Thank you very much and good afternoon colleagues. As was said, my name's Patrick Flynn and I have the privilege of being the Director of City Development, which is a new post, I'm in post two months, consists of planning in Glasgow, housing, building standards, city deal, sustainability in the city centre. Team was previously Head of Housing and Regeneration. So it's quite a wide agenda that I'm in charge of, so I'm looking forward to questions. There are key areas just now that are front of everyone's mind, one of them sustainability and the implications of that for all of the services that I'm in charge of and colleagues across the council. Because this isn't something that can be put in a silo, it has to be embedded in everyone's work plans at the moment. And that's something we are looking at and through the questions, I'd be happy to describe the governance around that and some of the key projects that we're putting in place. And people will understand how it's an agenda that's forming. But one that is crucial for us all because we're all persuaded on the implications of the climate emergency. The city centres at the front again of people's minds just now, there was recently a report here committee on our city centre task force and what we're doing regarding that. But there's also in the background, the development work in the city centre. And I think of people who have been in Glasgow recently. They will be gratified at the number of cranes that are up. And again, through the questions, I'd be happy to describe my meetings with developers at the moment, which I think and funders, which is absolutely crucial. And also some re-planning implications for the considerable amount of applications that we're getting at the moment across commercial resi and other sectors. I think I'll leave it at that because it's enough for me to start with and because this session's really about your questions. So if the questions could begin, that'd be great.
Okay, so thanks Patrick, that's great to just to get us kicked off, as you say, two months into the new role and it sounds like you will not be short of things to do with the expansion of those responsibilities. It's a lot for anyone. What do you see as perhaps the biggest challenges that you'll have coming up over the next few months? You've mentioned the three kind of main planks that obviously you're sort of have focused in your sights at the moment in terms of the sustainability city centre and just the development agenda, I suppose. But I guess they all have their challenges, but what do you think is going to be, where do you see the most challenging areas for you?
Well, maybe take it by service. So in terms of housing, we are in the luxurious position of having £120.5 million in grant for new built housing through an affordable programme. Glasgow's, as many of your of the folk will understand, has got the transfer of management of development funding, which is much more important than people perhaps realise. So we are in control both of the housing strategy, which is absolutely key to understand what's happening in housing in the city. Our housing strategy is coming to an end 22 and we're in the process of beginning the engagement for 2328 housing strategy, which will be really quite different. So we are the Strategic Housing Authority and we are the funder. So £120.5 million is really significant. We do have a five-year rolling programme. And the key concerns just now are construction costs, which I'm sure a number of people will be nodding their heads. I'm pretty terrified by some of the cost inflation figures that are coming out just now and the lead times now trying to get, it's not it's not difficult things in the past, it's like internal doors taking months. So we're looking hard at what that implies for our ability to meet that spend. We get about £80 million in private finance attracted to that. So it's a £200 million programme in one year. It's a rolling five-year programme, but at the moment we have a significant amount of funding. But the construction sector are challenged and people will understand that.
Yeah, it's certainly a message that we're obviously hearing from our own clients and in terms of just being desperate to get started on the ground to try and cap those costs, as it were. But it's a great position to be in with that, with that funding, as you say, and you know, the council obviously making plans for that. But it comes with its challenges and there's a drive certainly towards the repopulation of the city centre. The council's got some fairly ambitious numbers there in terms of the growth targets that you're looking to achieve in Glasgow. Do you want to talk us through that a bit, Patrick?
Well, we have a residential strategy and there is an ambition to double the size of the population in the city centre. But just maybe highlight one thing, which I'm sure we'll do that, I'm absolutely certain we'll do that over the 10 years that we've put it to ourselves. And people will know, for instance, that Built to Red in Glasgow is now active, it's not Hope, it's very active. So platform got on site this week, Moda have been on site for a while, 480 in Moda, much the same with the platform figures, the trades done. The kind of work project with LNGs getting built and candle ricks is on and we have 5,000 consents for Built to Red, for instance. And that's been supplemented now by really active funded interest in co-living. So I'm pretty certain that we'll do the figures, but I'd like just to highlight one thing in that is that the city centre is small and the city council doesn't own land in the city centre, really. So it's a wee bit of a state, but we don't have land to do the kind of things that we have been good at in recent years, which is master planning and putting large scale developments down like the Games Village or people know Sighthill just now. But we have a plan for something like 10,000 houses around the city centre that we're in control of, mixed tenure, tenure blind. But if people know the city, Lorristan, the south side, the Gorbles is still very active. Tryston were in partnership with Barclays there and we've got two large sites. Glasgow Cross, Meat Market, Gallagate, Sighthill I mentioned, and Portendas, Hamilton Hill. And that's where we can do, we're reasonably good at, which is master planning and putting really high quality housing in place to support one of our unique selling points, which is the economy in Glasgow. So those houses will get footfall and it will also help attract foreign direct investment by providing really high quality housing and within a 20-minute neighbourhood of the largest employment area in the country, Glasgow city centre.
Yes, and I guess two of the things that you've mentioned there, I certainly saw were picked up, so key themes within the city centre strategic development framework, you mentioned of course the city centre task force and the work that it's doing. We had the Strategic Development Framework published last month, which has got a lot of great stuff in it and can see the master planning approach there that the council's taking towards some of the key key areas that you're focusing on within the city, which I think is really great to see. And as you say, that's something that the council has been very good at in the past. It's good as well to hear you mentioning some of these new forms of residential living that we've all been grappling with, I suppose, over the last 10 years and how the planning system is reacting to those. But so you certainly see that those will play their part in the mix coming through in Glasgow as well as the more traditional products, I suppose, that have always been there.
Well, that was a challenge because it was new, it's new everywhere to an extent, but there was a London model that came up, which wasn't quite appropriate BTR, which wasn't quite appropriate to Glasgow. But planning colleagues and others have worked really closely with the funders and the developers. And I think we now have a kind of understanding. So they understand that we really don't want individual flats in these properties sold. So we've got an illegal agreement through the planning process that works so that, you know, it does flip, it'll be a block at a time. The quality, yeah, it's case by case, but we really do want a high quality build because our city centre, one, is charming, is a real legacy from the Victorian era. In other places in Glasgow, the legacy is more under the ground. Every time you put a shovel in the ground in Glasgow, you find something interesting. But we have, really interesting, but we have a charming Victorian city that we have to complement. That's the kind of new build we've got. Plus, we're creating a new market. So the developers understand understand that. So a number of the developments, Moda for instance, I think are really high quality. And the testy things, you know, single aspect, we've compromised and come to an understanding on us. I do think we've got the kind of BTR initially anyway that the city and the market is looking for.
And it's good to see it, as you say, it's now coming through on the ground and it'll be great to see some of these schemes coming through. And Patrick, I suppose repurposing is a big theme at the moment. It's one of these people getting to all these buzzwords. We had another seminar in our offices earlier today, just talking around that theme. And but you know, it's obviously on everybody's minds, just with the challenges coming through Covid, vacant properties. It's obviously something that the council is very much focused anyway in terms of bringing back vacant land, vacant buildings into use. And but is it the case that sometimes the planning system maybe is a bit too rigid to react quickly to these situations? Or how can the council best tackle that sort of thing through its strategies?
There's a number of aspects to that. One is there's an overall strategic understanding that has to happen around sustainability. And that is densification and whether development comes into the core of a metropolitan area like Glasgow or whether we have sustainable transport and we have ribbon development. And so there's a key planning issue that's across the northern hemisphere just now is the role of city regions and whether we densify to ensure that services are local and we get sustainability. That way the sustainability benefits that way. In terms of repurposing, the specific things around the city centre, we definitely want to try to repurpose especially heritage stock where we can, help it happen where we can. And we're putting a resource into a tool, it's in the city centre task forces now. It's then jointly partnership with the chamber and others. And that is a kind of database to show what buildings are used for, what are empty. And then to build up the information around the key aspects that you mentioned at the end of your question, which is, and it usually comes down to bins and fire escapes and structure issues. I wouldn't minimise that. This isn't about planners being rigid. It's about planners ensuring the safety of buildings and remember, planning is a statutory function. So we have to comply with the law around planning. So what we want to do is make sure that developers understand that. And if possible, in specific buildings and areas so that they are doing abortive work and we can bring some imagination to helping keep our charming city centre that I mentioned earlier. But there's a lot of work in that, we understand that and we're putting the resource into the front end just now.
That sounds like a really useful initiative. And I suppose just in terms of, again, the city centre, I mean, everyone's talking about sort of patterns of working at the moment and just the changes that we all know are happening and just in terms of people's people's experience of working from home and how things have changed during the last two or months, etc. But what else can the council do to be trying to attract the workers and dispose some of the employers? If just be told when we think about the future of offices and to attract people back into the city centre. I was back in our office, I might say, yesterday for the first time in a while and it was great to be back in the city, just having that experience again, mixing with people, seeing what was going on. And you're mentioning the trains and all the rest of it. But how can the council help to entice the workforces back into the city?
Well, we can't do it on our own, so it's definitely in partnership with the chamber and the hotel sector and the rest who are on the city centre task force and fairly soon we'll start to rewrite the city centre strategy. But in practical terms, at the moment, we are working with the various sector on recovery blueprints for each sector. We're mapping vacancies across the city centre. We're involved now because of the government for grants and we're involved in business support grants and other mechanisms. We understand our role in marketing the city centre. So we're in partnership with Glasgow Life Fund, Tourism Scotland and others and doing that. And we understand Glasgow city council's city council role and attracting foreign direct investment along with private sector partners. So we're going to revamp the Invest Glasgow work around that sector as well. And in terms of return to work travel planning, we're looking at how we can make sure that people can get into work as easily as possible. We're talking to commercial suppliers just now and office builders and office building and estates managers. And we think there'll be more people coming in than perhaps we thought six or eight months ago. So the travel to work thing is absolutely key. Yeah, so we have colleagues involved in all of those areas.
Certainly a lot going on with that across the various strands. You've mentioned sustainability and that's, as you've said, that cuts across really everything that the council is just now and a number of particular issues. Obviously, we've got the conference, the COP conference coming up later in the year. And could you talk us through maybe some of the council's aspirations for the city in terms of the conference? What you're hoping to get out of that as well as obviously the wider themes which affect everybody and which will be being tackled hopefully, discussed certainly at the conference.
Well, the first ambition is that it goes smoothly. It's actually impossible to understand the variety of work streams that are involved and making sure this thing goes ahead. So I was involved in the Games and the Games Village and that was a huge endeavour. And this is a similar kind of type of thing. So the council is very busy at the moment with kind of fundamental things.
If you're looking for volunteers then we can have some more special jackets to wear.
Absolutely. So my daughter, my daughter signed up yesterday. So if anyone wants to, it's still open. But there's a number of legacy items that we have to have. We've got a sustainable Glasgow board revamped and there'll soon be a website comms around it in the next couple of weeks. And we've got hubs, we've got four hubs within that, they're practical things. So there's a housing and heat hub and there's a energy and transport hub, there's a greening hub. And I would just advise colleagues to make sure that they understand that they get onto that website and understand the breadth of the agenda, which is absolutely enormous. In terms of legacy, we hope to forge partnerships with other international bodies and cities to learn from others. But I think the key thing is, one of the things you said earlier, which is ensuring that programmes and projects of the councils involved in each work stream endeavour to ensure that there's a sustainability element in everything they do. And there's not just one sustainable team, it's about the whole council and partners ensuring that their work reduces carbon at the end of the day. So the new website in a couple of weeks is kind of key. There's a lot of challenges, people will understand this. There's on transport, there's maybe a technical fix that's getting rolled out on housing and buildings, it's not quite as clear, especially on heat. So we have programmes in place of making sure that the consultations that are coming out just now and there's a plethora of them, I would advise people to look at the heat buildings consultation that government's got out just now. It's 165 pages long. That is a key document for people to understand. Then there's pilots. So we have tenement, we have our pre-1919 tenement energy efficiency pilot just now. We have a passive programme in our affordable housing team. We have an affordable warmth programme for energy efficiency retrofit projects. So they're all pilots and that's understandable because in housing and in commercial, we don't really have the technical fix. Although it is again gratifying that the funders in particular, on the commercial side, they're driving energy efficiency in office buildings and retail. So you know, kind of pleased about that. But until we get a technical fix here, so heat pumps, ground source, whatever, it's hard to imagine, it's hard to quite see where the programme programme is going to be and the skills issues around that as well, which I'm less unhappy about because I do know the Scottish government and others, the trade, the supply chain are working on skills just now. I think we will get that there'll be quality jobs in this. It's the technology that really concerns me.
I think it'll be really interesting to see what comes out of, I mean, you mentioned the tenement pilot programme and I've heard the council leader talking about that very enthusiastically previously as well. It would be a game changer obviously to be able to roll out a successful programme arising from that just given the nature of a lot of the housing stock that we have across the city. I can speak to myself in terms of the old draft, the old draft the tenement. But I mean, the greening of the city and just drawing on the sort of blue infrastructure as well as the green infrastructure again, key themes coming out of the city centre development framework. And there's a lot of exciting stuff happening around the river, I guess, some of which has been on the agenda for a while. So it'll be really great to see that coming forward. But the avenues project certainly has been, seems to have been very successful in Glasgow, obviously work ongoing with that. But what are some of the next steps, maybe in terms of the greening, the greening of the city, which I know the council's keen to tackle?
There's a number of aspects to that. You mentioned grey and blue and I think that's crucial as well, given the recent SEPA figures on surface water. So surface water management is crucial. And I would just maybe highlight selfishly that the Smart Canal in Glasgow has recently won a UK award for water infrastructure major awards. And that's a major piece of European infrastructure, uses a canal to forecast, because it's a computer system to forecast water levels and then it drains. My colleagues who know about these things hate me calling it giant suds pond, but it's a wee bit like that. That's the kind of thing we have to do with surface water management. And we have a large programme, we're in partnership through the Metropolitan Glasgow Sustainable Drainies Partnership, which is my favourite acronym. So that's Scottish Water and Scottish Canals and Gateway and others. And that's got a strategy now and it's regional, but and it's crucial, it's crucial for the city region. Now we've got a Clyde Mission with Scottish Government in partnership with that. And people have seen recent things as well, as well as the city centre, SDF, there's the governing paddock and things like the governing paddock bridge and the work we have to do each side of the river, our canalised river to ensure both the largest park in the city, which is the river and the surface water management implications of the river and the heat source, which could be the river, which is really exciting. There's a pilot coming in that which is, could be about the game changer. The river is a resource across a number of areas and we're talking about greening, we should remember that. More generally, we have an open space strategy in the side development plan, which we're hanging a number of developments on. So the greening hub and the sustainable Glasgow board is working to collate all them because there's a number of different funding sources. As people will understand, councils are facilitators now as much as direct contractors. So we draw together a number of funding streams and for greening, there is a large number of funding opportunities and we are putting them together under our open space plan to do some really quite interesting things with gaps, smaller spaces and some of the larger ones. So for instance, we're in partnership with the RNA for Letham Hill. So that's a large park, golf course area. And we've got funding and a really important partner to make the most of that green space, for instance. So one example.
No, that's, it's all great stuff. We're not getting our green bridge across the ME as yet.
Well, it won't be green because transport Scotland is worried people with uproot plants and things and throw them onto the motorway. So it's very green on each side of it.
They have a good point in that, they probably have a good point in that.
As people know that area, then they'll see what looks like a large ship on the south side of the motorway. And that's the bridge that will be completed early next year.
That's fantastic stuff. And you mentioned Transport Scotland there. So I did want to come back to just ask you a question about the Glasgow Metro, which has obviously a lot of work been done on that. I suppose it's a project maybe that's had various guises over time, but made it into the Strategic Transport Projects Review earlier this year and I know work is ongoing. Patrick, but if you're a gambling man, do you think that's, do you think it's going to come to fruition?
Well, it's a number of aspects. Well, there's a number of aspects that we are doing feasibility work just now. But whatever comes out of that, there will be stuff comes out of it. So there will be active travel improvements across the city. What the big ticket items will be is up to a partnership that involves others as well. So we are looking forward to the culmination of feasibility and we've got people working a number of active travel projects around and about it as well. So yes, happy that we're getting there.
Yeah, it's a step in the right direction anyway. And connectivity, I guess, is so key to many of the things that the council was interested in and just helping people to obviously move it in the city. But Neil, maybe just pass over to you at this point and you can maybe pick up on not have me hogging all the questions. Pick up on some of the questions that have been coming in while we're chatting.
Yeah, thanks very much. That was really interesting because it did cover just an enormous amount of stuff. And I'm not sure whether to be jealous of Patrick, that there's so many exciting things or worried in his behalf that he's got so much on his plate. Well, of course. Oh, I can just imagine. Oh, I can just imagine. One of the questions that came in was touching on something that you hadn't specifically mentioned, but it's fitting in with the overall themes. And I'll maybe just read it out will be the easiest thing, actually. What is Patrick's view, the council's view towards buildings of notable height in the city and city centre? And particularly the buildings of height with a mix of uses within them, thinking along sustainability lines? Do you see that as a good way of helping increase the city's population? So it's picking up a bit on your density point of, well, I suppose in part, as you mentioned, the city centre core itself is fairly small. So to get as many folk in as we can, do we go upwards as it were, the way that we see, particularly with the likes of London, Manchester to some extent, et cetera, et cetera. But it's also, I suppose, picking up on your point about the Victorian fabric and the design issues, the sort of sympathetic design. And I'm quite sure the questioner's not really seeing much chance of anything in Byers Road, for instance. But how about in the sort of city centre core itself? You know, are we going to see more taller buildings like the Scottish Power one at Charing Cross?
Oh, yes, we've got pre-up discussions just now with folk who do want significant height. I think if people know the development plan, they'll understand that around the edge of the city centre, especially the western edge, that that height would mostly be accomplished. And it's significant. So just now, you know, more than seventeen, but we're talking to people about thirty, thirty-two. And, you know, we'll go through the planning process and we'll see where we get to. But we're certainly not afraid of height in the city centre and the correct locations. The Victorian core, again, we'd have to protect and enhance. But again, we're not afraid of height. It depends what you mean by height to an extent. But maybe suggest that Candlewigs is a good example of the densification that we need in the core. And we are certainly not afraid, again, of mixed use. No one is, the development communities now is persuaded, absolutely persuaded in that. So I'm trying to think of the major developments we've got just now. All, most of them, all of them, it's obviously housing, people want to live and work close by. And we want to try and accommodate that as far as we can. So developers are now coming to us with mixed use, mixed use in the same building. And that's kind of unusual in Glasgow in terms of the pre-up stuff that we're talking to folk about. And, you know, we're down in Manchester to look at Beetham and the rest. And we would have to look at that on a case by case basis.
So you can certainly see that, I think, in a number of your documents at the moment, sort of looking, looking to other cities to see what's working well for them and trying to draw on the best. I'm sure there's a lot that Glasgow could be exporting and the other cities are all sleeping to look at what we're doing in terms of the city rights. But I think it's great to draw on these lessons, particularly around some of some of the cities in the north of England where there's a lot of good, a lot of good stuff happening too.
Yeah, well, I think I go on busman's holidays all the time, look at stuff. And I think our architects or engineers, our supply chain, development supply chain, people in the G I A just now, are as good as anybody and better than most. So I think that's a resource that is really benefiting the city because some of the design elements that we have, I know it's always subjective and people have strong views, but I think our architects can put stuff down in the ground as good as anybody.
And do you think the design panel at Glasgow, I mean, obviously plays a really important role in just, you know, helping to shape what comes forward, that's very active in its approach.
I think it's a really useful mechanism. I think if we didn't have it, we would have to invent it. I think it's a, let's, if we're going to have a fight, let's have a fight. But I think there's a lot of expert folk in it who can help advise as well. As I had in our planning department, obviously I would say this, but there are folk in the planning department. And I'm sure the development community in Glasgow will accept us that they, once they come in for applications, that they can, they can help in terms of some of the design advice because of experience and the rest. So with the planning department and the design guys, it's I think it's a help in the process.
I think people dearly embrace it that way.
And just picking up the mention of the planning department, they are, and I think, Patrick, from what you said, that's a new element to your responsibilities with the new job. And clearly, the policy, the strategy aspect of planning is really important. And you mentioned, you know, pre-up discussions and all the rest. But to what extent is it on your agenda to look at the delivery aspects within the planning department later down the line? Someone's asked a particular question about delays when developers are trying to discharge off applications later in the process. So, you know, the concept signed off and it's pushing through the detail. And we're all aware, public sector limited resources problems in that sense. But have you got that, that part of the delivery agenda on your list of things to be looking at?
Well, yes, if only because we report to government in terms of our performance standards for planning. So we have to keep them at a high rate, continue to. So that's one of my key KPIs is the performance of planning and building standards and how it's getting imported back to government. In my experience, there's always two sides to the story when you get into the detail on who told what and what details have been given and is that enough? But the key, the key message is that Glasgow is open for business and development. The issue with Glasgow can often be that we are a fairly low value market, both in terms of rents. Commercial slightly different, but the rents and values. So the deal can be difficult for developers. Again, something that washes its face is difficult and we understand that the bottom line will be really tight. We've got an interest in keeping quality up. Funders have sometimes a different interest depending on the market. But we definitely want to do deals. So it can often be case by case. If there are specific delays, then, as I said, that's my responsibility to do something about it. Because it's a city development plan, it's about development.
And Patrick, just over the last, I suppose, twelve months or so, people, you know, officers have been working from home as well and members, the way they're dealing with committees and things. Are there any things which have worked well, I suppose, in terms of the sort of virtual processes and things that you would, that you would like to be, you know, taking forward or perhaps, you know, evolving into a sort of practice on a on a more standard footing? It does seem as if a lot of the councils have really taken very well to the, you know, some of the virtual processes around committees and just how they're able to sort of view applications and use the technology in terms of their their own functioning to get things working pretty slickly.
Well, I think officers have to be commended for finding workarounds early on. We're the same as everyone else. When you're affected by pandemic, some of the stuff came as a surprise, IT's been difficult. So officers have found very sneaky workarounds at times to get things done. But now we're kind of getting into our stride, the teams thing and the committee thing seems to be working fairly well. The only thing I would say, to be frank, is that I would really like a GIS system that both saved officer time and provided better information, clearer information, both for members and the public and yourselves, partners. So I'm working to ensure that GIS that we have is better effectively.
And one thing that we've not really kind of touched on in the discussion so far is thinking about the communities themselves and the conundrum, particularly for developers, that proposing new development quite often risks a bit of a backlash. And, you know, we get into the chats about the vocal minorities and all the rest of it. But the planning system in some ways has the impossible task of keeping everybody happy all of the time. And you're in charge of the planning function, so it's now your job to keep everyone happy all the time. But how do you see, you know, what are the tactics for bringing the communities along with the vision and making them feel part of it, rather than as we feel sometimes they just feel negative and no one's asked me and no one cares what I feel?
I can't really answer that without highlighting local development plans just now. The Scottish government's consultations and ideas around local development plans. So that may change planning considerably. And I think anyone in development should understand that the aspirations of Scottish government to involve local communities more at an earlier stage. I would advise that the pre-apply process in Glasgow, I think, works well in terms of advising on how to engage communities most effectively. Glasgow's like any other, fairly last city in that there are community groups that work better than others and there's community groups. Some community councils are working somewhat, but we, our planners and others can advise on community engagement at the pre-app stage. I think that's the most practical answer to that.
Yeah, and, you know, I would echo what you were saying about the local place plans and interesting possibilities there for that community engagement, community empowerment agenda. And yes, I think developers are well aware, have been for quite a few years now, that you can't see it as a problem, you've got to see it as an opportunity. And as you're saying, to work with communities and consult properly and effectively and, you know, fairly early on.
The planning process is, sorry, the planning process is tried through the SDFs as well to give developers a step for a hint in terms of where, how their development could fit into local aspirations. And they're fairly new. So the North SDF in particular has, has an extensive community engagement and political engagement. So it should be used as a tool by developers to see how their development fits into the overall plan.
I think certainly a lot of the clients that we speak to, they see the benefit of engaging in these, you know, even where the processes aren't necessarily required in terms of the application consultation with the community, a lot of the clients that see just as standard will see the benefit in in having those conversations early on to try and bring the communities with them. And obviously it pays off in terms of how they approach it. So it's certainly good advice to anybody.
And I think that's a very positive note, just to bring things to an end. We do like to try and keep to time. There's so much to discuss, we could still be here till nine o'clock and I'm not sure any of our families would thank us. So just to say, thank you very much again to Patrick. I appreciate when you're so new in post, you must have so many things to do. So it was good of you to give up the time to come and give us some insights into the myriad of things that are on your desk. And I think we really all do want to wish you well for continuing to grapple with those. But particularly that delivery focus that you were talking about. And just in winding up, there isn't another Planning Live to mention. This is the end of the series. We're now thinking of summer holidays, probably just in Britain for the majority of us. But a holiday is a holiday. We will be announcing another round of Planning Live. So it's a bit watch this space. If you do have any ideas of topics you would like us to cover or other speakers that you would like us to invite, then you know where to get hold of us. And in fact, the slide is there with our contact details.